We just went from eight to thirteen, so at least five folks just got in.
Yup, yup.
Now fourteen.
Alright, so I still don't see that Don is unmuted. Will someone unmute the 804-994-9668 number?
I sent him the request to unmute.
Alright, and see, he's on his phone now.
It'll prompt with the message one thing.
On the phone?
Yeah, it'll give you a voice message saying push a couple of numbers.
Okay. If you all don't mind, if we can give him another minute. There we go. Don, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yep, we can hear you fine. We've got all the commissioners in attendance. I'm gonna go ahead, are there other people in the waiting room? I'd like to go ahead because it's already six after seven, and get the meeting started if you all don't object. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you all recall, we actually recessed our March third meeting, and we are now, this is being reconvened from that meeting, so it's the same meeting, we've just extended it. So although we're not required to, for purposes of keeping and facilitating the meeting, we have an agenda to keep us on topic. We've got a lot of things to review this evening. And because we already had a public comment period on March third, we won't be doing that again. The primary purpose for breaking up the meeting and recessing till tonight was to allow us to discuss the survey results of the surveys that were made available to citizens in a number of different formats, and to review the stakeholder comments from the stakeholder meetings that were back in January, and we just received those, so we've got a lot to go over tonight. If we may, let's just go ahead, and though we don't need to, if we could go ahead and do the roll call, and just confirm we've got all our planning commissioners in attendance.
Mr. Breeden?
Here.
Ms. Height?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
And Chair Members?
Here. Okay, so I'm gonna set the stage a little bit, and then we'll go ahead and proceed. So the results of the comprehensive survey that was developed by the Berkeley Group and disseminated to the general population, our citizens, those were sent by mail, they were made available in the King William offices, and they were also available online for completion. The completed surveys were due back, I think it was the end of February, and the Berkeley Group has summarized the results of those surveys into, condensed them into about forty pages of material that we will be going through this evening. I believe, and Ms. Graham told me, were there five hundred or five hundred and fifty surveys that were completed?
I don't remember the exact number, but it was probably like five seventy-six, something like that.
Right.
Or five seventy-six.
Right, so a good number of people participated, which is a wonderful thing, and we appreciate the citizen participation. There were also, the Berkeley Group just sent out to us, and so it's hot off our press, results from the stakeholder meetings that were held on January twenty-six. Just for purposes of those who are attending this evening, there were four groups: farmers and landowners, tourism and economic development being the second group, the third group being real estate, bankers and attorneys, and the fourth group being surveyors, contractors and engineers. Based on the synopsis that the Berkeley Group has provided with those results, Berkeley identified the individuals to participate in those stakeholder meetings, just so everyone knows. Twenty-three of the individuals identified were contacted and asked if they would like to participate, and I believe that eleven folks participated in those four stakeholder meetings that occurred in January. Hope everyone's had an opportunity on the planning commission to review Berkeley's summaries. And my thought was, although this can be an interactive process, is that we go around and each commissioner perhaps speak on his or her observations in their review of the survey results and the stakeholder results as well, and then we can engage in a larger discussion about, and try to distill what we think there may be issues, and maybe develop an action plan if that is necessary. Do you all have any comments or thoughts on proceeding that way, if we just go commissioner by commissioner? Alright, so I don't hear anybody saying nay, no. Heck no. So I would ask if one commissioner would volunteer to start the process and just, I'm not saying that people can't interject, but let's just hear what each one of us has pulled from this information. Who's up?
If I may, Madam Chair. So I was concerned that we find out as soon as possible if there were major concerns by a lot of folks about some of the work we've done. And I was very pleasantly surprised by the many hundreds of responses we got back that for the most part, it appears they like what we've done, if they've read it at all. And it reinforces what we had thought the citizens believed, and indeed, apparently, a large number of them do. There are a couple of places where some folks have some concerns. Probably the biggest one, the one I think is probably most likely to engender discussion tonight going forward is the minimum lot size in the agricultural areas. It's not a minimum lot size in the whole county, but in the rural parts of the county. And the hundreds or so of responses we got back, the vast majority of them wanted to keep the rural areas rural, and a ten acre minimum would do that. But there were a fair number of folks in the survey, as well as in the focus groups, who were strongly opposed to that. So if we're gonna make that change, and we don't need to go tonight, but if we're gonna make that change, we need to be able to articulate why it's in the best interest of the county as a whole, and that's kind of my overall.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Alright, who's up next?
This is Don Wagner, Madam Chair, and if I may, I pretty much agree with John Breeden, his comments on the minimum lot size. Just, I did note that in the stakeholders, that the, although the Berkeley Group indicated that this was a big issue, the survey results are the stakeholder response. When you have only, I think it was three of the groups favored, or were opposed to the increase in the minimum lot size, but when you have three groups out of four, and with only eleven stakeholders, I question whether that's particularly significant. And we don't have any breakdown of who or what groups, what actual groups, such as a contractor or developer or whatever, were being represented in the comments in those groups. So I do have a concern there. But what I wanted to talk about then was the question of six rezoning, where the draft ordinance includes a change that would require the site plan will be required to be committed with any rezoning request. The primary concern to the PC or management of survey the primary concern to the PC or management, I got a little something mixed up in my comments there, but our purpose was to be able to manage development by being able to see what was being proposed at the time the rezoning was proposed. Also, it gives a lot better handle on what's going on in the county. And a lot of stuff and comments, made the comment that they wanted to be able to understand what changes were being made in the zoning. They, well, the 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 citizen, the survey response was overwhelmingly in agreement by sixty-four point thirty-six percent that this change was very important. With the comments from the citizens that I've heard, then it is my opinion that we should move forward with that, and recommend, or at least I would recommend approval of that ordinance.
Alright, Mr. Wagner, okay, thank you so much. Next up. I'm gonna call on somebody. Ms. Height?
Well, first I would like to disclose that I had trouble opening the file that Sherry had sent to us, and so I had to ask for her to print off a copy. And I've not had as much time to review all the final results as what I would like. But some of the things that, in addition to, I agree with what Mr. Breeden said, and a good portion of what Mr. Wagner said, as far as seeing some of the concerns, I'd like to interject that, you know, what I saw, an overwhelming response to, was citizens wanting to keep the rural nature of the county to preserve the agricultural and forestry areas. I did see that there was some concern about the minimum lot size, and think that's something that we do need to go back and, you know, talk about. There was also a lot of comments related to needing a drugstore in King William, as well as the citizens just wanting the county to protect property rights. So those are my observations from the time that I've had to review the document.
That's good, thank you, Ms. Height. Vice Chair Greenwood?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I guess I was kind of confused. I thought Berkeley Group was gonna be here tonight as well to answer questions if we had any about this, all of this information, but I can see, I guess that's not the case.
No, I don't think it was planned, but that may be something that we talk about after our discussion about next steps.
Madam Chair, as I recall, the Berkeley Group is gonna be addressing both groups. My purpose in wanting to make sure we thought in advance was, if there was something earth shattering, oh my goodness, we need to talk about it and hash it out, we would have the opportunity to do it rather than be caught flat footed. So my understanding was the Berkeley Group would be speaking to both of us at a joint meeting, I think in April.
Yes, that's correct. They will definitely be there, and I'm recalling, as you are, we wanted to meet before that meeting for the purpose of kind of having a dialogue.
Yeah. And if I may also, Madam Chair, although I spoke initially, going back to Ms. Height's comments, I also saw that keep the rural areas rural, support farms, the whole nine yards. And that's kind of reflects what we saw in the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan survey. It's just been repeated here again. And then in the summary, about half the folks wanted to see the ten acre minimum, which I thought that would be less popular than it actually is. It does impose a burden on the landowner somewhat, but if the community as a whole wishes to keep the rural areas rural, that's been the method used by Hanover to keep the rural areas rural there. And so, again, echoing that, and then on Mr. Wagner, I feel very strongly on the need for at least a preliminary site plan for any rezoning. I was on the opposite side of that fence on the rezoning for three sixty. For the simple matter, that was something that everyone already agreed, I think, should be zoned commercial anyway. So if it was already zoned commercial, we wouldn't need a site plan. But for rezonings, for a wide variety of reasons, we can get it that coming weeks and months, at least a preliminary site plan is absolutely warranted.
Right. Mr. Greenwood, did you want to, did you have some observations as well, and then I can add mine at the end?
Yeah, like I said, I was hoping that we would have them here tonight so that we could get all that. But if you're saying we're gonna propose another meeting, I didn't see any other dates proposed before that next meeting with the joint commissions, because I would have rather had it, we talked to them tonight, like I said, to not have us look stupid than come to the board and have all these questions for Berkeley Group when they're there, before we even talk to them ourselves. But if you're thinking that we're gonna plan another meeting before then, then that would be good. But I don't know if there's enough time for that.
I, that hasn't been discussed, Mr. Greenwood, you're right, it's a squeeze. And in fact, this is a squeeze. We just got the stakeholder group results two days ago. So, you know, what I would recommend is we get the comments, we talk about, and one of the items on our agenda is to discuss next steps, and I'd like to hear from other folks about their feelings about it. I agree with you, in a perfect world, we'd have the Berkeley Group come into every meeting, frankly. Would love to pick their brains on a lot of these things. But like John said, I think if we identify any preliminary concerns after we have this discussion, I think one of the line items is that we talk about, you know, the strategy, next steps and plans, so.
Okay, that's good. But as I said, going forward with what we have now, and seeing that that's the case, I have a few things. Like you said, since we just got the, I have trouble too, because my internet's not that great here either, and my printer is almost obsolete, so I can't print anything. So I had to have the county print me the package full out as well, because I can't see anything on this phone big enough to do anything, but it's bad enough with these charts and graphs on a full sheet of paper. But from what I've picked up, like you said, the first thing that we had a few, a little bit longer to do, I was surprised. And like I said, the question's still working on a vague, and I think people are, don't know the full meaning or understanding of some of these questions. Like question six, it was talking about the rezoning, and they say, in their opinion, how important is it to know the type of business, the design and the site layout? Well, that kind of, and then it went into the question about mandatory site plans. That's kind of two different questions, and that's what we really needed to separate. I'm in total disagreement with Mr. Wagner and Mr. Breeden about that. The site plans cost so much, we can't get businesses to come here now. Something small, like I said, it would be nice to know this is a generalization. That would be great to have all that information in advance, but you may not know a prospective buyer when you're setting up your lot to make it available for commercial. And that's another thing that the Board of Supervisors is working with the EDA. We don't have any lots that are readily available, and that's the problem. While we can't get businesses to come here, and I know people say they don't want business, but if it's allowed on the three sixty thirty quarter, then that's what we should, like I said, we should set it so that that whole area is already set, and maybe we don't have to rezone. I can understand what John's saying. If it's specifically about rezoning, then yes, but the question was so vague, I don't think we should generalize everything as that and make them do a site plan. Yes, if it's for a specific rezoning, then probably yes. But like I said, all of three sixty thirty quarter should be already zoned that way. So a preliminary one would be nice, but nothing that takes a lot of money, like I said, that somebody's gonna have to do, just to come up with something with the idea, they don't even know for sure if the company's gonna even come yet. That was one thing I saw. And then the other thing was, with the lot sizes, I know we talked a lot about five to ten acres, and when we had the questions before with all the people, but the people, and y'all are saying, and making it sound like to the public that it was way more for higher lot size, but the percentages are not that different. Thirty-nine percent, I mean, it's almost forty percent to forty-six percent. That's only a few percentages off, and like I said, the people may not have totally understood. And then when the stakeholders came in, and y'all are saying that it's not a good group to go on because it's just a small amount of people, but they're the people in the groups that are in this business, people with real estate, with sales. If they say, and all the stakeholder groups in that forum said that nobody went for the ten acres, and the Board of Supervisors didn't want to go for ten acres back in the day. So I'm just saying, we shouldn't go on what, since the percentages were so close, forcing it to be ten acres if it's only gonna be five acres and something else. And I don't think we should have a split rate, five acres in commercial and ten acres in rural. But we can, and that's whatever the board comes up with, is what I guess we'll provide. Those are the things that popped out to me. And I think that's, like you said, without going over, I guess we'll just take it by ear, like you said, and take if anybody has specific, if we maybe go by category, and I would suggest if we know what we wanna, but some people may not have the pages, I don't know, it'd be kind of hard to try and keep up with which item or category we're talking about.
Right, right. Thank you. Right, and I think we'll talk, one of the questions I have is about, you know, we're going over summaries and information, and it's not incumbent upon us to release that information at some point, that will be released. So we're speaking in generalities for certain, and I agree. I think some of the questions were a bit confusing, for sure. But if I may, also, my observations, many are consistent with the other planning commissioners. And I agree, I believe as a whole, that the survey results in particular, and the stakeholder comments as well, to an extent, are consistent with the proposed changes to the ordinance. I was pleased with the number of responses. It's good that people are engaged. This is what we're here for. And so I think we're on track. So on the lot size, I agree. I do think that this warrants further discussion. Out of the four stakeholder groups, three out of the four opposed increasing the lot size in the agricultural district from five to ten acres. And then on the citizen surveys, forty, there was a specific question, the citizen surveys, on increasing the lot size from five to ten acres. Forty-six agreed with the lot change, and then thirty-nine percent, so forty-six percent agreed with increase, and thirty-nine percent opposed. So you've got seventy-five percent of the stakeholder groups that oppose having a larger lot size in the agricultural district. And then you've got, it's not half and half, you've got more citizens that want an increase in the lot sizes, but you have thirty-nine percent that are opposed. So I think that this warrants further consideration. On the site plan, I don't have the same concerns. There are two out of the four stakeholder groups don't like the site plans for rezoning, so it was only, it was half of them. But there were sixty-four percent of the citizens that responded in the surveys said that they want site plans prior to rezoning, that they wanted a sense of certainty. So for me, the site plan, I don't have a concern or a need personally to revisit the site plan. The other observation I wanted to speak to the group about is, the citizen surveys reflect a very strong desire to preserve the rural community and character of the county, as well as preserve agriculture. Citizens were asked to select out of a number of items, I can't remember if it was fifteen items to select from, three that they would itemize as their top priority in terms of zoning. And two of the top three were preserve rural character of the county and preserve agricultural. The third item on the citizen surveys was to encourage new commercial business. This was somewhat of a surprise to me. And you see, in the individual survey results, people are responding, well, you know, we don't want commercial. We do, but when you look at the percentage, one of the top things is encourage new commercial business. The stakeholder groups also focused on commercial business, and the need for commercial businesses as well. And while I think some of these items are going to be addressed in the comp plan review, the question I came to is, well, you've got, even the citizens want to preserve the rural character, but they also want commercial business, and so how do you reconcile it? And so one of the things that I would recommend, and I'd like to hear your feedback is, is from my perspective, right now, the two options for, let's say, a farmer or a large landowner who's not making money on his farming, okay? So he's not pulling enough money from his farming, which may be a reality. The two options are to subdivide his property or for solar farms. Those are two immediate things that I think, from my perspective, I would think are options for that landowner. One of the things I saw in the survey results from the citizens was opposition, a lot of opposition to solar farms, and concern for the solar farms in terms of environmental areas. And I saw this repeated in the stakeholder groups. So some counties have developed their ordinances in a manner that promotes specifically agritourism, is one of the terms that you can use. And it permits by right in agricultural districts, certain uses as identified, agricultural tourism activities, which could be wineries, it could be breweries, it could be a putting farm, you name it, I don't know what it is, you all may have better ideas than I. But to allow it by right with restrictions, and so a lot of these jurisdictions will have, for instance, a fifty acre lot size minimum, they address concerns about parking, things of that nature. Sometimes they'll say, you know, the primary activity still has to be farming, but you can supplement by right with these agritourism activities. And so what I would like to do, and I'd like to talk to you all more about it, is I don't know that our ordinance right now, even with the proposed revisions, really expands upon that and breaks it down, that would promote that type of activity in the county, which I think generally speaking would be supported. So those are my observations, and that's what I've got. So we've heard from all the commissioners, and if we can not speak over one another, but I'd like to hear from you all, if there are additional comments or thoughts in response to your fellow commissioners' observations.
Madam Chair, this is Don Wagner, if I may. Looking at the results of the, I can't find it now, but the results of the requirement for a site plan with rezonings, the citizens were over six percent in favor of that in this citizen survey. I think that, from what I'm seeing, from all the comments and everything that I'm seeing, the citizens want control of what's going on in the county. They want good ordinances, they want those ordinance to have good requirements for any kind of development or whatever. And they've spoken loudly that they, I think, that they want to be able to know what's happening when the property is rezoned, why is it being rezoned, what's it gonna be used for? Right now, once we rezone a property where we don't have a site plan, that opens that property up for any kind of development that is not conditional use. So they can go out there and put anything they want on it. And I think a lot of us were recently concerned with the storage units at Kennington, that we had no control over that. That was done a long time ago, it was in a commercial spot. But when it came up, since it wasn't a conditional use, we had no control. And there have been problems there. I think Stephen has heard from some of his constituents in Kennington about the fact that they took away the landscaping when they were in the process of building. In my opinion, the landscaping they put back is inadequate. But the citizens deserve the opportunity to be able to speak out when some development is going on in their backyard. And so I think we need those kinds of controls moving forward. You know, basically, that's pretty much what I've got to say about that. I just think it's one of those things that we I just think it's one of those things that we, that we need. If we don't, if we don't agree to do it with a rezoning, then my, my suggestion would be that we require a public hearing with every rezoning, I mean, every site plan in the TCO. In order that we have an opportunity to see what's going on and the public has an opportunity to see what's going on and the public has an opportunity to speak about issues that concern them. Noise, pollution, any other number of items. While we think we've got good ordinances that do protect against most of those things, it still can be a concern to the citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I would, I would echo a lot of what Don has said. But I would add on to that, in addition to the fact that when you're rezoning, and, and, and basically our land use is, is like 15 years old, 13, 14, 15 years old. And, and I'm looking forward to the future of land use map being updated. That reflects the expectations and the desires of the community. And, and the, and the EDA and, and the developers are in agreement with, with what has been, with what is being proposed. And we can even proactively go about rezoning and saving them money where, where the landowners, the community agrees something should be commercial. Having said that, once we have updated that future land use map, once the citizens have weighed in on what they want to have in the area, there may be some rezonings that are appropriate in the future that we go, oh, my goodness, we'd love to have that here, we want to have it here. However, it also, as, as Mr. Wagner has pointed out, could result in, in land that everybody thought should be this or that, and it turns out someone wants to do something different and what's going to be there. And in addition to the concerns of the citizens, quite frankly, and we have sophisticated developers that wouldn't have this problem, but there might be others who would move forward without realizing that there, there was water areas that DEQ would fight them on. Wegmans is fighting through that right now. So the earlier we had a preliminary site plan, better off it is not only for the neighbors, but also potentially for some of our less sophisticated developers. Again, the ones that know all this stuff inside, now it wouldn't be too worried about it. But like, for example, the, the, the mine folks in the fourth district are already on top of all that sort of thing. We did a site visit and, and they are, have, have, had, have it all planned out. Other less sophisticated developers might create a quagmire for themselves and a preliminary site plan could help eliminate that and could help them as well as the joining landowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Height or Mr. Greenwood, do you all have any additional comments?
Madam Chair, I did just want to reiterate one of the things that you said, and I believe might have been brought up by Mr. Breeden as well. I do think that some of the questions on the survey were confusing to some of the citizens or, you know, just not understanding and knowing zoning ordinances to begin with. Some of the questions were confusing to them. I did want to also bring up, there were quite a few responses related to family subdivisions and the right to be able to do so. And their concerns about what size and how long before they could own the property, before they could do a family subdivision. I do think that the, based off of, you know, the differences between the stakeholders groups, their thoughts and the citizens' thoughts related to the minimum block sizes and regards to site plans are just things that we're going to still have to continue to talk about. And I appreciate the other planning commissioners' thoughts and, and concerns about all of those.
Okay, very good. All right. Mr. Greenwood, did you have anything? Everyone's got a double dip, you want to come in?
No. I agree with the, most people have been saying about the rights of landowners. They do, I guess landowners do have a certain right to do what they want. We shouldn't be pushing some of these restrictions on them too, I guess. But about the comment that was made about solar, that's another thing that's, it's so much misinformation out there. And I saw some of the stuff on the surveys that said it's getting away from green and all this stuff. But the thing is, they don't know that farming, there's lots of chemicals that go on people's land in farming. And when it goes to solar, all those chemicals are not going to be put in the land anymore. Like I said, the only reason that they're allowed to be put on the land anymore because farmers are grandfathered in, they can do all that because you have to farm. And you, in order to farm, you have to put a lot of that stuff on. But none of that stuff's going to be put on a solar farm. And, and you said the two options that you saw were subdivisions or the solar farm. The problem is that they're totally different. Subdivisions put a huge burden on the county for services. Solar farms don't put any burden on the county at all. And with our new ordinance and with the new laws coming out with the government, we can set fees and we can get money from these things. The county will actually get money from these things. And if we just tweak them, and I think that I haven't seen the solar new ordinance that, that specific language, but I know that that's passed because Hanover does it and King and Queen does it. I'm sure that we can put something in ours that gives us a certain amount of money from these things so that we will be getting money. Unfortunately, we didn't get a lot from that first one. But hopefully in the future, maybe that could be a possibility too. So I just wanted to let everybody know, there are lots of pros and cons for each. And there's a lot more cons with turning it into subdivisions because it's a lot more roads, a lot more services, a lot more schools, a lot more everything. Solar farms are still quiet, everybody says the trees are gone, but it's still grass, it's still land. It's, and another thing that we put in our ordinance, when it's over with, if, if some chance the thing, the company goes under, we're guaranteed with the security bonds that it will go back exactly the way it was to land that can be used for farming. So that's another plus. I just wanted to throw that in.
If I may, Mr. Greenwood, and I appreciate that comment on the solar facilities. I didn't have a concern, generally speaking, that people don't want them at all. I think there's, was more of a sentiment of, you know, being sensitive to environmental areas and wetlands and things of that nature. And my comment was only, and I would agree in terms of the burden on the county, there's less of a burden certainly on the county in terms of having a solar facility than there would be for a large subdivision on, on property. So for the solar facilities, also, we had Mr. Breeden chair, which I don't know if we call the subcommittee, but specifically look at that portion of the ordinance so that we can ensure that we're appropriately address, address that. Mr. Breeden, would you like to speak briefly about that so we can?
Yes, so we had the subcommittee and we invited people who had been both for and against Sweet Sue. And we took all their comments, plus some we received from other folks, and, and as a group, agreed to a lot of them, as a group disagreed with some of them. And I think everybody on both sides of the issue was very pleased with, with the, with the resulting draft that we came up with. I think probably the biggest concern some folks have is we only put them in brown fields or, or on areas designated industrial versus farm. And I think the consensus was they want to allow them everywhere. So, so I, I'm pretty comfortable that that's covered fairly well already.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, yes. Just to add to that, we, we had asked the Berkeley group to look into the 2020 ordinance that allows us, as, as Mr. Greenwood pointed out, that allows us to charge certain fees. And I would like to ask Sheri if we have ever gotten that information back from Berkeley.
They incorporated all of the legislative changes into the ordinance, which does allow us to collect certain fees.
Okay, okay, well, that's good. And then follow up on that with what Mr. Greenwood said. I think he's pointing out something very specific, very important. And we do, we do, we have gone through a lot with, with the solar farms. I think all of us pretty well understand the solar. But it points out that we, as a planning commission, have a good knowledge and understanding of all of these issues. There may be a few that we're a little rusty on, but for the most part, we, we understand. And when we're looking at the citizen survey and the stakeholder groups, have a weigh-in on those, we also need to give a strong weight to our knowledge of the ordinances and our knowledge of what the county needs. And, and it, having said that, it's, it's good to know what the citizens think. And I think we've gotten some really good responses from what the citizens think. A lot of the comments that they made on the, on the ordinances on the survey. So, you know, I, I, I don't know that we're going to resolve all these things tonight. It's a lot to, to take in, to take in. But I think the majority of the ordinances that the citizens have agreed with. And I think the best way for us to deal with this is, is look at those things that we've already spoken about and any other issues that we might have concerns with. See what we can resolve in those few issues that we do have a concern with. And then it would be my suggestion that we recommend going ahead to the board and to the, to Berkeley group meeting with what we have, unless we have any absolute changes that we think we have to make or if we have any comments to go along with any of these changes for the board supervisors.
Well, so I want to think this through because we've identified, I think everybody's on the same page with the lot size is needing additional discussion. From my perspective, I don't know that I'm entirely qualified to address some of the specific statements made in the stakeholder comments. And, and don't know what best practices are in terms of how to achieve the rural, preserve the rural nature of the community and, and not increase the lot size. And what, what is a best practice? And so how do we get this information so that when we are before the board, we can provide the board with whatever decision it is, whatever recommendation it is, that it is based on, it's an informed recommendation? So that's my question. It's specifically about the lot size, but it could be about any of the other topics we've discussed as well. My, I didn't, again, I didn't have a concern about the, about the site plan, but, you know, maybe that that's something that we, we want to discuss further as well. So we've got our joint meeting, April, what is it, 12th?
Well, yeah.
Okay, it's April 12th. We've got our joint, our joint meeting. And we've identified some topics that we think warrant further discussion. So are we going in on April 12th with a recommendation specifically? Or is it more of a work session to discuss? And I don't know specifically how the meeting has been, the design of that meeting.
Madam Chair, it's, Sheri is here. So does she have any additional information on what the, how the Berkeley group will handle that meeting?
They did tell me that they plan to submit the same materials along with a memo that reviews the results and compares similar localities. And they're going to provide their recommendations.
Okay, so we will have their recommendations to be able to discuss with the board supervisors?
They're going to do all of this on the 12th?
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Based on that information, I, I would really like to hear Berkeley's recommendations before we, as a, a commission, were to, you know, have informed recommendations from our perspective going into a meeting or to, to provide to a board. I, I would really rather have Berkeley's recommendations before we move forward to try to make our own.
Thank you, Ms. Height. It's an astute observation. I'm, I'm leaning in that direction. Anyone else?
And I concur.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to throw something in as well. Like I said, because like I said, I mean, I don't mean to sound rude or crass, but it's going to make us look kind of uninformed or not very on top of things if we're just going into the meeting, the same thing, and we haven't even heard these things beforehand either. And I notice we do have one more planning commission, real one, before then. So I was hoping, like you said, if our Mr. Breeden and Ms. Height said we could get the results, if they don't want to show up at our next actual meeting, at least give us the, their results, as Mr. Wagner said, so that we can go amongst, at least amongst ourselves so we'll have kind of a consensus of where we want to go to. I just don't want to be thrown in there and then have them spring all this stuff up on us too. And then everybody's hearing it for the first time. But that's just an idea that I had. If we could do that, it would be nice if we could get together with them in advance to.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. So let's talk about it. I, I'd like that too. Not that I'm going to argue about it, but I know, I, I know what's going to be discussed. So let's talk about it because our next planning commission meeting, I believe, is on April 6th. I think we have four public hearings. Ms. Graham, could you speak to what we've got on our agenda that evening?
Yeah, we have four public hearings. King Williams Sand and Gravel, that's a modification to an existing CUP. We actually did do a site inspection there. Mr. Breeden and Mr. Wagner and myself really didn't see a lot of issues with it. They've sent me some of their reports today. I'm going to try to get that out to y'all by the end of the week. We have two, one for Mr. Queen. He's on 1053 West Chickapin. He wants to do an accessory dwelling for a family member. We have a Mr. Chester at 3806 Custis Mill Pond. He also wants to do an accessory dwelling for a family member. And then we have Coastal Farm Services, Matt Crabbe. He has some property on Landing Road. And he wants to put in a 3,500 grass airstrip with his spray planes. He did that about a year ago and got a conditional use permit. He has sold that property. So he's wanting to relocate to this location.
So we've got a pretty full agenda is my, is my take on that. And so, you know, if we were to say, and I don't know where, where Berkeley group is, it would be great to get that memo. If they can't meet with us, to at least get that memo so that we can discuss it potentially. We've got our meeting on the 6th and then the joint meeting with the board of supervisors is on the 12th. So that leaves us, and, and that's presuming we can only do it with, we're already, oh my gosh, what's today? Today's the 24th. So we would be looking at the first week in April, presuming that the Berkeley group could get that memo to us. And that may be at the same time they're releasing the board packets.
Chairman Rhodes, they do have to get that information to us by next Friday so we can get the packets together for the joint work session with the board supervisors. So that package will go out to y'all prior to the meeting.
When does it have to be made available? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Ms. Graham.
Next Friday.
So the packet with that memo from the Berkeley group with the recommendations has to be released on the April 2nd?
Second of April.
Well, we get that information from them by the second to get that put into the packets.
Yeah.
Delivered the following week.
Okay, so what that puts us is it's really the Okay, so what that puts us is, it's really the week of April 5th. If we want to tack it on to our regular agenda, or if we want to have a special meeting, kind of, and maybe it's, it's a work session, I don't care what you call it, but during that week. What are everybody's thoughts?
Madam Sheri, if I may, I'm glad we'll be able to get it in advance of the joint meeting. My bigger concern was the survey and the stakeholder groups that we already had. So while I'm looking forward to seeing the memo as well, I, I don't think that's going to be, take up too much time or require too much of our attention. So I think we, we just put that as our last item for our April meeting, I think, I think we're good to go on that.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, I agree because it sounds like usually we don't have too many people show up for some of these public hearings, so maybe they'll go a little bit fast and then maybe we'll still have a little time, as Mr. Breeden said, to incorporate it in the same, in our regular meeting.
That'd be great. I think we should keep that, Ms. Graham, if you, and Ms. Cole, if you would ensure that that is on the agenda, we'd be grateful.
Madam Chair, Don Wagner, I agree with what Mr. Breeden commented on. I, I, I think, I think our main focus needs to be on the information we've got. And we, as a planning commission, need to have our own thoughts on this, on this whole subject of the ordinances. Berkeley Group, the Berkeley Group information may be helpful when we get together with the board, and it would certainly be good to see that ahead of time. But again, I think we need to focus on, on the survey and the stakeholder group comments and be in a, be in a position to respond to those comments. For instance, and I'll throw this out there, the Berkeley Group on the lot sizes made the com, I mean, the Berkeley Group with the stakeholders, two of the stakeholder groups at least, made the comment that they could not, they could not get loans on anything over five acre lots. I, I haven't seen anything that, that indicates that, that's a fact. And in looking at the information they commented on was the USBA loans, USBA, US Department of Agriculture, they make farm loans. And certainly when they're making farm loans, they're going to be making it to farmers who have larger than five acre tracts. Also, the, the basis, and I think you can help me on this, Madam Chair, the basis of the loans is going to be on the ability to pay, not necessarily the size of the lot or the size of the house or anything like that. It's going to be based on the price of the property and their ability to pay. Thank you.
Right, right. Well, I, you know, I don't specialize in finance, but I, I'm not aware of any maximum size requirements in terms of, for financing purposes. But what practically people are experiencing out when they're trying to get a loan is a different thing. I'm not out there trying to get a loan, so I don't know, I'm not in the circumstance. But just my general knowledge, I'm not aware of, of that. I think we're all on the same page then in terms of having that Berkeley recommendations at our next meeting, and so we can review those and be prepared to speak to them to the extent we feel necessary. I was going to move on with our agenda, if I may, unless there are any further comments on what we've been discussing. Okay. I have on here during this work session, discussion of draft ordinance and discussion of plans for future work sessions. I don't know that we really need to talk about the draft ordinance because we just did. So I, I don't know that we need to add anything to that item on the agenda. Discussion of plans for future work sessions, we've had a discussion, we don't have anything planned currently. Does anyone feel that we need to have any work session set in the future based on the schedule for the ordinance and how that's being unrolled? Okay, just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. All right, well, I think this has been a very helpful conversation, and thank you everyone for reviewing the materials. My eyes are glossed over, I'm exhausted, but I was really looking forward to hearing all of your comments. And it's been a productive meeting from my perspective, and thank you for your insight. So this evening, we have some special guests from our very own BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Chairman Shoemaker reached out to us recently and asked for the opportunity for he and his colleagues on the BZA to address the planning commission. And so I would like for Chairman Shoemaker to be unmuted and to have, allow him an opportunity to speak and, and address the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank you very much for inviting us for this informative work session. We figured we would be getting our eyes glossy too, just by listening, so a lot of information for you guys to digest. Also, I want to say on behalf of the BZA, you guys are doing a remarkable job, and I want to just thank each of the commissioners, Bonnie Height, John Breeden, Mr. Wagner, Stephen Greenwood, as well as yourself, Ms. Rose, for the many hours that you guys are spending on this zoning planning refit and the upcoming comprehensive plan. Anyway, it's just a lot of hours that you guys spend, and I appreciate the dedication that you have to this community, so thank you very much. As I mentioned to you briefly yesterday, I just, our goal as the BZA is just become more familiar with the planning ordinances in King William County, and be able to offer any kind of insight that we may have. And then just based on the information I had heard tonight, I think there is a common theme that we have picked up as a BZA, and that deals with the lot sizes and families. There are some families out there that have good acreage and they, they're trying to sell it off to some of their kids that are willing to stick around and take care of them. So that's been a real common theme over the last few years. I'm hoping maybe in the next month or so, I can gather some statistics from, from the county that will gather up all the different types of different variances that we've had, maybe over the last 10 years, and see if that has a common theme to it also. I think that might be helpful. And also, I just wanted to acknowledge, I believe we have Laura Nunley, who would, who may want to make a comment, and I'm not sure if there is anyone else from the BZA on board right now. I don't see Mike Nolan. I know that Doris White couldn't make it this evening, but would it be okay?
Of course. We're happy to, to have her. So if we could unmute Ms. Nunley?
She may not have anything to say, but...
Sure, we'll provide her an opportunity, please.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Wonderful. I just wanted to say thank you so much. This has been very informative, and I appreciate you allowing the BZA to be part of it.
Of course, we're happy to have you all. I think we would all agree, Chairman Shoemaker, in terms of information, the more information we have, the better. It's not that we can promise we're going to be looking at everything, we've got a lot on our hands, but it, you all have had the benefit of hearing this discussion this evening. It sounds like you all have come to your own conclusions in terms of what you've heard and, and think that may need further discussion, and so any further information is appreciated. And we, I would recommend that you and your colleagues, to the extent you can, join us in our meetings, and there will be some, of course, public forums that are coming up as well. I don't know if the website on the county has the planned timeline for all of this. I believe that it does, but that might be helpful to you as well. I'd like an opportunity to have my fellow planning commissioners chime in if they see fit.
Madam Chair, if I could, just real quick, like, I like your idea, Mr. Shoemaker, getting a, a collection of the variances that have been given. Are they staff misinterpretations, or are there sections of the zoning and subdivision ordinances that, that you all have concerns with? And so I think that'll be an excellent added tool for us to look at and go, oh my goodness, we should have taken this into account, all these people have had to appeal, and we need to change the ordinance, or no, it's just fine as it is. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, Don Wagner. Mr. Shoemaker, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I just want to give you a reminder on something that you all have the power to do, or when you run into issues that are recurring themes, you need to bring those things to the attention of the planning commission and to see if we can't make changes in the zoning ordinances where, where those recurring themes are, recurring themes are deterrent to good land use practices, so that we can review those and make changes as, as might be necessary. And I certainly want to thank the three of you for attending the BZA certification. I am comfortable that you profit a lot from that, in issues with, dealing with certain cases that have been, cases brought before the Virginia Supreme Court and, or cases were overturned because the BZA had acted improperly. So I hope you all will study those closely and remember, and I'm sure, I'm sure you do, you know this as well as I do, that your responsibility is a quasi judicial responsibility. You're not looking to make anybody feel good. You have a responsibility to make sure that any change made is justified as a, what I want to say, as an issue with, with the zoning ordinance, not a, not a, not a fault, not just something the property owner wants to do. But I would like to talk to you sometime in the near future about some of those issues that I encountered previously and, and hope I can be some help to you in, in working through some of those things. With that, thank you all. Thank you both for attending tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Any, Mr. Greenwood or Ms. Height, anything to add?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add, I was thinking maybe even as we go forward, one of the things that this board can do is we can create a subcommittee if we'd like to, and I was wanting to maybe bring that up with the entire board, our board, this board, and say if we wanted to do that, because that, a lot of issues have come up with different things, and like saying, I think it's gotten misconstrued over the, what the meaning of things that are the Board of Supervisors is doing right now. But we, further in the future, I was wondering if maybe our, the planning commission could come up with a subcommittee that would have members from the BZA and members from the local tribes, Indian tribes on there, and maybe people from the school board, because we are allowed to do that. And, and one of the issues that we were running into with the legal side of it was that you can't actually be members of the planning commission without having a vote. But with a subcommittee, we could have all of these people in the subcommittee that would have a voice, but they wouldn't have a vote, but at least we would get all their opinions and ideas. And if we could maybe, I mean, I would suggest maybe even meeting every quarter with, with the committee, have someone, we could come up with who there's on the committee and then have the committee meet maybe once every quarter to come up with, like Mr. Wagner was saying, issues that they have, issues that other people say. And I talked with Mr. Tuppence on the, one of the tribes, and they really didn't want to be, have a voting voice anyway. They were just saying they wanted to be informed and let know what was going on in case like there was a tribal ground or burial ground or anything like that with areas in the county that might be involved. And that way, we could have a lot of input from a lot of other areas. So that's just an idea if we might want to look at moving forward.
Anyone else?
And thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just like to thank the BZA members for attending and being a part of the discussion tonight. And again, if they have or see any additional concerns, that they reach out to us to let us know. And I do appreciate them looking into gathering the statistics. I do think that that would be a benefit to know in moving forward with a decision. So thanks again for y'all being here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Height.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think we're at the end of our meeting this evening, record time, folks. Enjoy it while it lasts, but I guess it's a carryover, right? So it's really not. Any closing, any other comments in closing?
Madam Sheri, if I may, with, with four public hearings that are April meeting, it is imperative that we get at least the two largest ones, the commercial ones, by Friday, as Ms. Graham is hoping to do. I think for us to be able to have the time to go through those mountains of pages and documents and whatnot, we need to have sufficient time. That's been a problem traditionally with every planning director we've had, because they're so busy with everything else they're doing, they don't necessarily get the materials to us in a timely fashion. So for those two in particular, I hope we can get them by Friday. Thank you.
With that, I, my job is in Fredericksburg, I commute two days a week, it's a new job, and I'm, I'm pulling 14-hour days. So if you all, the sooner you can get it to us, the better. I would like to be able to dig into it and see the sites and get my arms around it. Thank you.
And for those of you who have not made it out to the fourth district to see the, the mine, the, the plant manager invites y'all out, he can meet you on Saturday if necessary, if any of y'all have not already been.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, he, he, Mr. Height is a very, very sharp guy, and I was very impressed with what I saw, but it, it's important enough, I think everybody needs to find time to go out there and see it, if you haven't already. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, John and I both, both have his phone number so that you can give him a call and make an appointment.
Perfect, so please reach out to Mr. Breeden or Mr. Wagner to get that information. All right, do I need to make a motion for the group to adjourn?
One, one minute, Madam Chairman.
Oh, all right.
I just have a question for Sheri. Since the governor has now said that as, as of April 1st, we can meet with 50 people, is there a good chance that we could have our next planning commission meeting in person?
We can, we can have up to 50 people in the room, so we'll still have it by way of Zoom. We did advertise it that way for the public hearings, but we can certainly meet in here and do it both ways.
I, I would really like to be in a position where we can all sit down and look at, look at each other again.
I agree, I agree. It'll be a nice welcome change for a lot of us, I think. All right, well, so if that, if you could make that opportunity available to us, are there others that would be attending in person then, so that they can prepare? I think I would plan to. Mr. Wagner plans to?
Yes, I would.
Good, okay. So it sounds like we've got a large enough group, if you all can make those arrangements, we'd appreciate it. Any other comments? Thank you, it's very good, Mr. Wagner. All right, back to my question. Do I need to make a motion or have someone make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? So glad that's the case. Thank you, everybody. It's nice seeing everybody's face.
I'll have a good night.
All right, have a good night.